His older brother.
Shoes.
I can never.
He outgrew and he said, he outgrew the size shoe I am.
Exact executive order. I was just wearing 12s.
And those are all old school. I prefer for.
A real. All right, meeting will come to order. Let the record show that Val's not here and neither Sarah need a motion to excuse.
So moved.
Thank you, Matt. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
I.
I opposed. Join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, to note, we're recording tonight's meeting and it is live on YouTube. Additions or corrections to the published agenda we do on item number, area number seven, the resolutions, the Journal news support is going to move to council consideration. Has been some discussion. Other nap room pretty good shape. In the meantime, speaking of Grant County Journal, we have a plethora of Journal people here, but I think Shannon wants to talk to us. Mm hmm. Please. Oh, no, we can't have.
How's it feel on that side of the table?
All right, well, thank you. So do I need to? My name is Shannon Lowry. Give me my address as well.
We know where you live.
All right, well, because I'm live on YouTube and because we've got a reporter back here, I'm going to read for my statement. Just want to make sure I get it all accurate. So my name is Shannon Lowry. I'm the president of the Board of Trustees for GCJ.news. I'm here with my fellow board member Kathleen Alstott and steering committee member Katie Capello and our editor Randy Barak. So this group, in addition to several others, began talking about nine months ago about the, I guess, the desert, for lack of a better word, of local community news in Efrida. We all, this group is very passionate about the need for it. Now that we lost the Grant County Journal, it closed its doors a couple of years ago. And since then, there's just been a palpable lack of community news. So we looked around the country, we talked to other newspapers around the country, and there was a growing trend for a model of a nonprofit, online news source, and we decided we were going to give it a shot. The community needed it, and we believe that we could do it. So we set up as a nonprofit. We have our editor, Randy Brock. He's a large part of the reason that we believe this venture can be sustained. This community trusts him. He's been providing accurate, meaningful, reliable news for 40 years. So with his help and the assurance that we were going to have his guidance going forward for some time, we put together the rest of the team. We have a second reporter and an IT manager, Casey Devine, as well as Lindsay Mayer, who's helping us with our, the donation side, the financial side of things. I don't think it's probably lost on this group in particular, that when you lose community news, you, you just lose your connection with your community. And, and we really felt like the things we were hearing from the community, that that loss was, was really starting to have an impact. When you lose that, you lose the trust of your community. So we are very glad to be bringing that back together again. We went live in August. We have received about $80,000 in donations since we really got going this summer. And to be sustainable, we estimate that we need a budget of about $225,000 per year. The bulk of that is for three full-time staff members, a development director and two reporters slash IT manager. And then there's some ancillary costs for what it takes to, you know, keep our technology going, subscriptions and memberships and that sort of thing. The bulk of that financing will come from the community itself. To be sustainable, this community needs to support it. And we're seeing, and there's a lot of people that are willing to do so, for which we are very grateful. We got a long way to go. We're not even halfway there yet for our first year of operating budget. We will be pursuing foundation grants as well as advertising. But the bulk of it, the, that boat of it will be individual donations and the support of entities like the city council, school board, the hospital, and then of course, our local business community. So we're very focused on getting the word out, talking to the people that we hope will help sustain us. And we're here tonight to request your support as well for this venture. Does have any questions?
Oh.
Yeah, it's looking like this is going to be far more than just a blog. What, how does this differ from the other line, online news sources that we have like Source One, Herald Online, that sort of thing?
Not necessarily different, with perhaps the content being the exception. We are very focused on the greater Efrida kind of community and making sure that we are meeting those needs. We heard from, so I heard personally from many people, I know Randy did and other, other folks on the committee, that just not knowing who has passed, it had a significant impact on them. They missed funerals because they didn't know. There are places you can get that information, such as the funeral homes, but they missed having that in a publication that they trusted. Randy is committed to, you know, covering local governments. We have, of course, a strong need for sports coverage for, for our local schools. And so we're, we're really focused on that. And then just the records, you know, that, that are the archive of this community sort of too. So I think content is the primary way that being more focused on.
Right now, we have a website and we have a newsletter that goes out there and we have an app. So there are a lot of different ways trying to reach the different parts of the community. People my age will look at websites. My grandson will not. Get the younger people involved is something that we're looking at as well. It's really important to know what's going on in your town, know why the tower looks shredded and flapping and everything. It's like, and you can look at Facebook or other social media, but they aren't always accurate. And we're going to strive, as we always have, to be as accurate as possible. And we are not having comments because we don't want to run down the rabbit hole that comments lead to. So we're looking like other nonprofit newspapers around the country to be a newspaper that doesn't need paper, gets the news out to the community. You look like you have a thought there.
So the, the process in the startup phase, I understand, is kind of slow and there's finding your niche and your path as we go on to that and knowing that the nonprofit, I mean, there's so many foundational issues that you guys are going through and I, I, I just don't make eye contact whenever I get into that because I, that, that's way beyond my, my game. So what, what would you say as far as goals are, like the three month, five month, year, where, where would you like to be with that?
You referencing the funding portion?
Just the whole, you know, here we are and here's what we're doing right now and we're good at it. And we're reaching a pretty good audience, but what are, do you have projections for, for what you'd like to have in the next?
We'd like to still be talking to you a year from now. We'd like to be here. Raising this amount of money is really challenging, but we are trying all the different avenues that we'll sat through a presentation. Charge a hundred dollars an hour to write a grant for me. There's just a lot of ways that we're approaching how to get this to be positive.
So is the goal to be weekly, bi-weekly, month?
That's the magic of online news. It's, it's, it's daily, right? When Randy's covering the story, he's posting it as soon as he has finished it, not waiting, you know, for one or two days from now. So it's really, the cadence is driven by the news itself. And one thing I left out that was very important to the team is that we don't create any sort of paywall between our readership and the news. We want it to be free and accessible 24/7 to anyone who needs it. So we don't have a paid subscription model, which we believe to be really important, but we do encourage people to subscribe online so that they are getting a newsletter in their inbox when there's, right now, I think it's weekly, Randy? The newsletter.
Yes, on Thursday.
Yes. So weekly on those newsletters. But again, stories are posted as they're occurring and as they're completed.
So with that, with the app, is there an alert on that for Joe Blow here that all of a sudden Mr. Brock comes up with a Pulitzer Prize winner, that that hits Maya's, there's an article heads up?
Yes.
That's the important part is, you know, like you're talking is that communication thing is, is very big.
There's a link on the website that will tell you how to put the app on your phone or on your tablet or on your computer.
There you go.
Our next goal is to start paying the staff. Randy and Casey and Lindsay have been donating their time, just as the board and the steering committee have, but we want to pay those three positions to, to stay sustainable. If one of them were to leave or finally retired, we want to make sure we're able to get high-quality reporters in or, you know, IT folks to help us. So we want to get those positions paid and you know, we are very focused on trying to reach every corner in terms of getting the news out that there's news, the local community news available, but also to those who are interested in, in helping us sustain the venture. So we're really turning our attention to where those folks are and trying to meet them where they're at and help them join the team.
Well, that's the rub. I think everybody in here would be raising their hand to, to help support. Unfortunately, we have issues and that's why we moved it from a different, to, to talk about that, to make sure that we're legally able to do what we want to do.
That's important to us too.
Yeah, absolutely. Any other questions from council?
Of you who are over a certain age, we are a qualified charitable. Take your qualified charitable distributions now that you are. That is another way to donate. Tax the thing, like.
Okay. Well, thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you. You'll only sign up on the request to address councils. We'll move on. Need a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thanks, Mike. Second?
Second.
Thanks, Phil. Questions? All in favor?
I.
Opposed? So moved. Staff and committee reports, you have them on your computers, but we are going to have a special report from the finance, a quarterly presentation.
Good evening, councilors and Mr. Mayor. Finance report for you guys. We'll start off with our general fund budget. This is anything that's not specific. So it's a lot that's put in under this general fund. Here we, our revenues are on the left, our expenses are on the right. It'll be like that through the whole report. Our revenues are slightly high and our expenses are a little bit low. We do have some transfers happening that'll go from the general fund to our street fund. It'll put us closer to 66%, sort of 60%, but we're still sitting good there. I know that many directors, myself included, we put off some expenses towards the end of the year. Some of those things that could happen next year if we need them to, such as a new computer, where we want to be on that five-year turnaround, they can make it to six-year if necessary. So sometimes we put that off. So that's where we're sitting right now. But we're sitting good. We won't be having those expenses this next year or the next couple of months. Here's the sales tax. 2025 is the orange. We're sitting good here. We're year-to-date, for the end of third quarter, we're 6% higher than we were at the same time last year. Year-to-date. And it's, we're having a continual upward trend there. Our library fund budget. This is property tax dependent. We get two payments in May and November, and then sometimes some triples. If you're late on your property tax payment, we don't get that property tax until you've paid it to the county. So sitting at 51%, we're sitting pretty good for revenue since we're above the half that we expected. And 69% there for expenses, we're sitting well, good as well. Parks fund, again, this is property tax dependent. So we're sitting good there. We also need to give a kudos to Josh. Summer with the pool is a very expensive quarter. Sometimes we blow the budget during summer, but he stayed very close to, and we're only 3% over. So we're doing very well because we're not going to have those summer expenses for the rest of the year. So we're doing very well there. This is our transportation benefit district fund. The revenue here is tax-based on the TBD tax as well as we have an STBG grant and reserve funds. We budgeted for about half of our funding to be from reserve funds for this. It's specifically prevention of maintenance on our streets that needed to happen, as well as crack and chip seal. Instead of paying twice for everyone to mobilize, it's better to do it once, do one big project. So we're sitting about where we expected to be with that revenue and our expenses are on the lower side. So we're doing well there. Our street fund, this is almost entirely property tax, fuel tax, as well as reimbursable grants dependent. About half this budget, one is TIV reimbursable grant for Nat Washington. That's about one-fourth of that funding. So we move outward. Our fuel tax. I, it's looking like I estimated a little bit high on our revenue since we are sitting for 2025 at 74.3% instead of the 75. I was close, like not quite.
Seven tenths, gosh darn it.
Yeah. So, yeah, we're sitting a little bit lower than we were last year. So it's something definitely need to keep an eye on since it's, it is a downward trend is what we're seeing right now. ARPA funds, all this is showing is we officially spent all of our ARPA funds. We have no more federal money left. Spent all of it on the final bit on street resourcing. And we didn't go over by too much, which is exactly what instructions were. We didn't want, if we were to have left a penny in there, we would have had to send that back to the government. So we said, go over just a tiny bit, just to ensure that we don't have to send anything back. Here we have our general capital budget. This is the fund that we created specifically for general capital funding, our project. So this specifically is over the 250 Basin Street, otherwise known as the Old Friday Building. We will, since this was an unbudgeted item for this fiscal year, we'll need to transfer from all the other funds. I'll be creating a spreadsheet, be doing percentages, create all of that. But we'll need to transfer that to use the reserve funds that we have been saving for a purchase like this. And these transfers are in budgeted, so we'll be seeing that in the upcoming council meetings. And we're going to have it, we had a discussion, we're going to have it specifically be a separate transfer. We're not going to put it in with our regular end-of-year transfers, so you can specifically see how we take that.
Government accounting remains the great unfathomable to, to me. And I know you have, some of this has to be designated based on, you know, which department's using what, et cetera, et cetera. Long story short, do we need to have a general plan on usage for that before you can, you can build your spreadsheet?
A little bit.
Okay.
Yeah. We can always change it. So if we were to say, police, we're moving everyone over, we just go with that. We can change that after the fact. I need something in place before the end of the year so I can start on my annual report. And then the next year, we might have to do a revision and say, this is what we changed with last year. But I, I do need something to go off of. So discussion that we had is everyone moves over. That's the easiest map that we need to do. And then we'll pivot from there.
All of question to that. When do you expect to have the architects, the report, which is going to tie into what you're, you're doing?
We'll, we'll budget to do an RFP or an RFQ for an architect to redesign that space for us in the next year. Hopefully by, depending on how involved y'all want to be, and we want to involve the public in that design, we'll determine the length of time it takes to, to get those. So you would meet with the architect, they would walk through, look at everything. We would have, give them space requirements, which Eric and his team has already kind of dictated that, what they need. And the architect would then come back with some conceptuals, then we could go start to kind of finagle and shimmy and shake those to, to our liking and then get a final design on them.
And one last question. What, what's your intent on this building if you move everybody over to that building?
I don't know. That would be part of the whole process.
Okay.
Basically, I need to do numbers with, we come up with official things. So I just need to, we need to go in a direction and then we'll pivot from there. Because we're not going to, we're not going to get it done by the end of the year when I need this.
Well, thank you.
Sanitation fund. Estimated bit high on or bit low on revenues and high on expenses, specifically where the cleanup at the landfill efforts lie. We padded the expenses extra because of the events around it. So this is about what we expected. Just because of all the events. A bit rental budget, again, revenue's a little bit low here. These are specifically transfers in. So that revenue is something I'm going to have to look at. Looking like I've estimated something wrong or there's a formula wrong. I believe I know exactly where it's at, but without looking at the numbers specifically. I think it's due to the police fund not transferring as much as we originally discussed. We had messed up some of that transfer process at the beginning of the year. We fixed it now. We haven't gone back and updated. But with our expenses also being low, it's sitting good here. Water sewer budget. Our revenues are a bit low. It's a lot of that. This taxes fees, but as expected, they're just a little low. We also have some big transfers happening in the expense side for loan repayments. We transfer out for those loan repayments that will be happening shortly. It's just under 1.9 million in transfers for those loans. So that actually puts us above budget at 81.1%. Which is higher than every other percentage, but not too high that I'm saying stop all spending at this point. Or I think we can reel it back in in the upcoming months. And then finally, our water source construction fund budget. We are low on both expenses and revenues. Our expenses specifically, these are mostly, well, they're all reimbursable grants. So we spend the money and then we have to wait to get the money back. It takes, I believe it's about 18 days. We have it timed out to be. So at the end of a quarter, if we put it in a reimbursement at the, in end of September, we don't get that money until October. So it throws off the graphs a little bit. So we're, we're sitting good here. Any follow-up questions with any of those?
No, looking through the, just the general reports, and this may be more of a question for Ron and then for you, but looking at the overall project and investments that are happening in the city this last year, number permits was down, but the dollar investment was up and that yielded a little bit lower fees than we were projecting, I think. Is that a result of fewer permits? Or I know we'd made some structural changes in our, in our fee structure to try and closer to map other cities. I'm thinking specifically like the microtell. I know we changed the fee structures for projects like that with the intention of attracting a, a project like that. Generally speaking, is that a result of policy or is it a result of fewer permits?
Fewer permits.
Okay.
Been expecting a downturn. Everyone else had a downturn, I believe it was about four years ago. And so Leslie has continued saying permits are going to slow down. Everyone else stayed. We sped up for a little bit. We're now finally seeing a slowdown that we expected. Everyone else happened.
Thank you.
Um, I guess one follow-up question I have for you guys is in my written report, I do, do you guys like the way I do percentages here where it's 75% the full number year-to-date, or in the report that I give you guys written, I'll do 25% under budget and that means 50%. Do you have any preference on that or would you like me? If anyone even noticing that I'm doing different.
Probably simpler the better.
Okay.
I, I, I miss the Wes Craig, if I'm honest, but he was, his color coding was terrible. I didn't like his color.
All right, great. Thanks, Kristen.
Thank you.
Got any more questions? Good for you. Move on to public hearing is now in session for RS 2571, the Speedway Flats, street renaming.
Mayor Council, before you, there's lots of public hearing to rename the streets in the Speedway Flats. Major plot, the streets. The plot was done under the purview of the county and so the streets were named under the county's naming policy, which doesn't fit with our, this, our city's layout. And so what we're asking the public to have the opportunity to speak on the proposed names for these roads. The Electric Avenue was chosen by the PUD. That map there is actually incorrect. The Nat Washington Way would be extended across the intersection and that Old Speedway Avenue would be what is, the county has named as South Point Cove.
So with the public hearing, is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak on this? Easy, one at a time. All right. Without any hearing, will anybody speaking, we'll close the public hearing and move on to resolutions and the renaming of Speedway Flats.
Ditto.
Ditto.
Before you, the actual resolution, the, the actual changing process that we have to go through to rename these streets. Building off of, of the presentation for the public hearing, we did send written notice to all the involved parties and invited them to this meeting and advised them of the potential name changes. We have not received any response from that. It affects about 15, 15 people, plus or minus. But a couple of those are, are single property owners that have several parcels. What we're asking for you guys to do is to approve resolution 2571 of the.
All right, questions? Need a motion to accept resolution 2571, the renaming of Speedway Flats.
So moved.
Phil?
Second.
Thank you, Kathleen. Questions? All in favor?
I.
I. Opposed? So moved. B was moved to items for council consideration. R 25073, the Mission Square Retirement.
Councilors and Mayor, so what this is, is we are just wanting to add an additional 57V retirement plan option for our staff. It would be at no cost to the city. It would be at no cost to the city. There would be a small cost for each individual that would like to join that plan. It's just adding an additional option that has additional investments. Um, some people have had this investment, this option in the past, and investments had a higher rate of return. So we've gotten the request from staff if we can add this stuff. Uh, we would not be taking away any current ones, um, unless you guys would like us to only have a couple of plans, then that can be discussed as well. But, um,
So it's not a, not a lot of cost involved with this, so kind of it's a win-win situation.
Stack time to enter it and you need to break.
Any other questions? Need a motion to accept R twenty-five seventy-three, the Mission Square Retirement Program?
So moved.
It's Mike. Second?
Second.
Thanks, Matt. Without questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So moved. RS twenty-five seventy-four, the Grant County Health District Agreement.
Um, last meeting, you had a presentation from Executive Director Teresa Adkinson. She presented on the uh, services that they provide. Historically, we have provided additional support out of our budget each year. Three dollars per resident. They've asked that we continue to do that. It's been a regularly budgeted item. It's no change from what we've done in the past. So we look for you to please um, approve this interlocal agreement. Of note, though, we do have to first take a step to acknowledge and waive conflict because their attorney is also our attorney. So we'd first need to, so there'd be two motions. One is to waive conflict with Kansas and France, representing both Grant County Health District and the city's president. And then a second motion to adopt resolution twenty-five zero seven four for twenty twenty-five, authorizing the mayor to sign an interlocal agreement to support the Grant County Health District in the twenty twenty-six budget.
Question for you, just for clarification. Um, I realize that the the rate is the same. But the obviously the population has changed. So what what amount of money are we talking about in addition to?
An additional?
An additional to to what we've paid in the past?
Three hundred bucks.
Okay. Good to know.
A big winner.
Yeah, okay.
All right. Thanks, Mike. First, we need to make a motion to waive the conflict of interest clause.
So moved.
Thank you, Kathleen. Second?
Second.
Thanks, Phil. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Now we need a motion to accept twenty-five seventy-four, the Health District Agreement.
So moved.
Thanks, Mike. Second?
Second.
Thanks, both. Phil, you're all over it. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good. Motion carries. Twenty-five seventy-five, the AFL-CIO Collective Bargaining Agreement, MOA.
Uh, so just kind of going through the collective bargaining agreement, we discovered a couple of typos and errors and and one particularly where we had been paying for a plan that had not been bargained for. Um, and we bargain a certain level, but we've been paying for a different plan since at least two thousand and ten. And there is a cost difference associated with that, which was a benefit uh, to the union members. And so in those discussions, um, they've asked that we just split that difference with them. So it's, but it still actually saves us because we're budgeting for the higher, but now we're going to be paying less. Um, so it's actually a bit of a savings to the city of about fifteen dollars per month per uh, for union member, which there's eighteen of them in that. It's not bothering. So other than that, it's clarification. And again, we're clarifying to what you already approved in the CBA versus the typos that were in the CBA. Um, for clarification, uh, uh, Teamsters Trust Plan B, uh, General Insurance Hasn't changed. It was just the the dental plan that was different. Uh, long-term, the term life insurance policy in the agreement was four dollars a month. That cost is now whopping four dollars and forty cents per month.
No.
Uh, so we're correcting that. Um, and then we had a difference in the language versus the number. Um, so we've changed that to be consistent at two hundred dollars per month deposited into the VBA account, which was the intent.
Basically, we're just making it right.
Yeah. Dotted eyes across the Ts that we should have dotted across about nine minutes ago.
Any questions from council? Need a motion to accept twenty-five seventy-five, the Collective Bargaining Agreement?
So moved.
Thank you, Kathleen. Second?
Brilliant.
Thanks, Bill. No questions on the table. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Without anything else on the agenda, we're going to move into executives. What did I miss? Oh?
Yeah, that's where we added.
Oh, right.
Discussion.
The, can't forget our company for crying out loud.
Yeah.
It's more of a consideration. Explain that.
We just need direction on what you would like to do. Um, we cannot just give the five thousand dollars. That would be gifting your public funds. Um, but if there's a dollar amount that the council's comfortable with, that they'd like to budget, we can begin discussions on a contract for some kind of return on that investment, whether it's advertising or purchasing space or something to that effect, so.
All right. We'll see what they got. Ideas?
I I fully support this endeavor. I think it's a big deal to have as much local communication as we can. We've seen nothing but that in every survey we put out, that people want more and more communication and knowledge what's going on uh, within the city. So um, I don't know where the like we do, the paper record still remains the herald, right? So it isn't like we can direct a lot of other stuff to them in that regard, but I I'm I'm in favor of doing more advertising. And it can be in the form of whatever communication you you deem fit.
Well, it sounds like we're we're going to have to have a little powwow to find out what our parameters are with this because I I don't think we're comfortable with setting a, uh, you know, a margin on this because uh, and as, you know, so we need to kind of sit down and talk about it. So it sounds like council is willing to look into options, look into capabilities and look into the legal ramifications. No way are we saying no, we're just trying to figure out which avenue we're going to be able to step into to put this together. So the direction from what I'm getting quietly is that we need to look at our, we're directing staff to look at our options and come back with different, different avenues of uh, to move forward, right?
And as long as it's in addition to, not in lieu of what we're doing with the other outlets, I guess.
Right. So something council needs to understand is this is an additional expense, probably out of the general fund, which is our smallest fund. It's the only fund you really have true discretion um, regarding and uh, it, that fund is our preliminary budget forecast. That fund is tight. Um, so there is counsel more likes to point off, there may be trade-offs that we'll have to talk about.
Options. So I think we have the direction, right?
Right.
And we've probably just created the next article for the Grant County Journal. Let's go. Okay. Thank you, council. Now, executive session. Uh, RCW forty-two point three, we're going to discuss litigation and potential litigation. I don't expect it to be too long, maybe fifteen minutes or something like that. Uh, if we have to make a decision after that, we'll re-rejoin, but otherwise we are going into executive session. So thank you.
Do they need an?
If you kids need your signal.